Would you all please stand and, oh, first, first, please let me have the clerk call the roll. Make sure these guys are all here. I'm not used to all these beautiful faces, and so it's really, it's got me kind of going, oh, wow.
All right. Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Now, would you all please stand for a flag salute and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will call Brad, are you there?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. If everyone can make sure that all microphones, phones, and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly. I'd appreciate it. Now, if Brad, our IT director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, no one has joined the Zoom meeting at this time.
Okay. And at this time, I will move into the portion of the citizens' input. Citizens may speak with county government, leading up to three minutes. Does anybody like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we will move into the consent agenda. The consent, at this time, the commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand approved as approval of prior minutes as presented, May 11th and May 18th, approval of the tax rule adjustments as presented, approval of accounts payable, accounts of payroll, and accounts, approval of public forum agenda as presented. It will stand approved. Next, we'll move into action items. Item one.
RFA 166-21 Telemedicine Services Agreement with Annie Grievous, Director of Community Corrections.
Good morning, Annie.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I know you could hear me without a mic.
And you know.
That voice.
We can even see you this morning. This is good.
I know. Feels good, doesn't it?
Yes. Yes.
I am here to request that the commission approve and sign a contract agreement with, I call him Dr. S because you don't want to butcher names, but with a telemedicine services agreement with Centa Health. They are licensed psychiatrist providers, and they will serve community corrections clients with telehealth. Direct services will be provided at a rate of $225 for two hours a week, and that's what we're contracted to do at this point. If it does allow in the contract to extend that time and certainly reduce it, consulting services will then be provided at a rate of $250 for two hours per week. If the agreement's approved, the consulting services will be reviewed after the agreement has been in effect for one month, and the parties will determine if the fees should be adjusted to allow consulting services. So right now, we're only going to do the direct consult services, and then if we need to go into the other services, we will do that otherwise. We're doing this because during COVID and the lack of ability to get clients seen for their med checks, it had expanded into different ways that made it difficult. And so this was an excellent opportunity. We got the referral from a good friend of ours, Shane Hudson from CKF, who utilizes him also for telehealth. Psychiatrists are limited in this town, but also across the states. And because of that, having that access to get the medication that they need is vital. And I probably have told you stories, but there, it just, when high-risk people in underserved populations don't get their meds or are unable to get that med prescription reviewed and set back up, it makes it even more difficult. And as you can only imagine, as community corrections, we want to ensure that all the best services and all the best options are allowed to increase their likelihood of success. So this is another piece to it. The contract has been back and forth between Dr. S, myself, and Mike Montoya, and he reviewed it, changed it, everything modified, we all made revisions, and finally, Mike did approve the contract and the medical insurance. So we're seeking approval to have the commission chair sign this today and then forward it on to Dr. S, who resides in Philadelphia, but has done this kind of service in Kansas for many, many years and has the actual provider that we'll be working with in Wichita. Any questions?
Go ahead.
No questions but a comment. It seems to be the way of the medical world since the pandemic is to go to telemedicine as much as possible. That having been said, along with the fact that there is no cost or budget impact to the county, my vote will be for to approve this request.
Okay. Just a, just a quick question here is the, you utilize Central Kansas Mental Health now, don't you, so?
We utilize every provider in this community.
Everybody.
And so what the goal would be is to avoid disruption of medication, avoid any of that, and then refer them back into whatever local provider they're already seeing or, so we will reach out to those local providers, and Dr. S will also have an opportunity to make sure that that transition from the telemedication service over back to the local provider is seamless.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Annie, how many client contacts do you look to take place in a week's time? You've got, is it two hours a week?
Right. Right now, we're only contracting two hours a week. We think we can get maybe three seen into that amount of time. We won't know until we start, but our goal is to, I mean, I was like, well, how many can we cram in there? Six? And that was unrealistic, of course, but I think we can get three in according to Dr. S and Michelle. We spent a lot of time, Michelle, here, trying to figure that out and what it would look like. We don't really know yet how many clients are going to need it. It kind of fluctuates. Sometimes you see them come out of jail and they haven't had their meds because they, nobody brought them there, and, and the jail nurse didn't have any, you know, means to get that. And so they come out, and it's terrible. It's a crisis. Sometimes they fail to get to their med check, or they think they went there and they didn't, and, you know, so it's hard to tell right now if we'll have three people a week. It could be less, it could be more, and that's when we'll tweak those services and look at that. But three would be optimal if we could do that in there. And I think Commissioner Vidrickson is absolutely right. Telemedicine is going to expand, and one of the things we, Michelle and I were just talking about, Michelle Callum, is that we're seeing that even community corrections agencies, they may not come back to the office. I mean, it's, it's surprising to us, but all these things were set up, and now they kind of, I guess, like it, and you'll see more telemedicine available. But because psychiatrists are so limited in so many patchy areas all over the state of Kansas and other states, this is necessary. But a funny thing is, my brother, who is a psychiatrist, works in Pennsylvania, Pittsburgh, and he's been contacted by many Kansas patients because he's worked here in Kansas prior, and they want to, since it's telemedicine, they want to hook up to him. So he renewed his license, and he's going to start doing some telemedicine with Kansas. So you know the need is great when that's happening. So that's just a little plug to my wonderful brother.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? Any member of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Telemedicine Services Agreement with Centsia Health LLC with RFA 166-21.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 166-21 Telemedicine Services Agreement. Any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Item number two.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a great day.
You too.
RFA 167-21 Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant with Michelle Barkley, Director of Emergency Management.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning. I am here on behalf of the Local Emergency Planning Committee to seek approval to modify our 2020 HMEPG grant. The scope of that grant is going to have to change similar to the other one due to COVID restrictions. So back in February, the LEPC seeked approval to send six technician-level operators from the Salina Fire Department to Baltimore to participate in a conference. Unfortunately, due to COVID, the conference is now virtual, and it doesn't cost any money, so it's not going to extend or expend the expenses of the grant. So back when we received change of scope for the alternate grant that we had, we had a drug IQ class that got modified into a trained aromen exercise. We are now seeking to partner these two grants and request that we can purchase a chemical simulator for a chlorine link, and we will do a water treatment exercise instead of participating in the conference. In my personal opinion, this is actually better for all of Selen County, not just Salina Fire Department, because by doing this exercise, we get to have more agencies participate, such as the Salina Police Department, the Slen County Sheriff's Office, Rural Fire, and the city, as well as KHP if they're willing to, versus just sending six to a conference. So as it stands right now, the grant will cover $9,960, and the soft match will still be followed by the Salina Fire Department, they'll still willing to cover the 20%, so there is no budget impact for the LEPC or the county.
Great. Thanks. Any comments by the commissioners or questions? Seeing none, is any members of the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize modification of the 2020 Hazardous Material Emergency Preparedness Grant and allow emergency management to move forward with creating the drill as presented.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 167-21 Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Have a great day. Item three.
RFA 168-21 Policy Revision 10.04 Slen County Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual and Internal Operations Manuels with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, commissioners. This change would update the timeframe to provide policy revisions to our policies and procedure manual. It allows the department heads and elected officials to review proposed updates and respond by email rather than doing it at a staff meeting, so it would allow us just to get that done a little bit more timely instead of waiting for those meetings. The alternatives for action is to approve the policy as presented, do not approve the policy. Our recommendation is to approve the policy, and there is no budget impact to this.
Thank you. Is there any further comments or questions by the commissioners? Seeing none, is any member of the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the revision to Policy 10-04 as presented by staff.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 168-21 Policy Revision 10 dash, or 10.04 Slen County Personal Policies and Procedures Manual and Internal Operations Manuels. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
You bet. Have a great day. Item four.
RFA 169-21 Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program Contract with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, commissioners. Slen County has been awarded funds by the Kansas Department of Transportation through a program called the Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program. This programmer will fund 90% of bridge construction up to $200,000. The Minner Road Bridge Replacement Project was submitted for this program, and this project is a 160-foot reinforced concrete haunt slab project located on Minner Road just east of Gibson Valley Road. The low bid for this project was awarded to L&amp;M Contractors for a total of $556,656. So therefore, 90% of that will exceed the $200,000, so we will be utilizing all, all of the funds that are available to us. In order to accept the funds, the Board of County Commissioners must approve and sign the agreement between KDOT and Slen County. So alternatives for action, me do want to approve Agreement Number 106-21, which details the agreement between KDOT and Slen County, or to not approve the agreement and reject the funds. Staff recommends to accept and sign the agreement with KDOT. Local funds for the Minner Road Bridge Replacement Project has been allocated through the Two Mill Special Bridge Fund. The $200,000 through the Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program is a reimbursement program, so we will, we'll have to have at least $200,000 of expenses before we can obtain that money. And so there's a reimbursement form that I'll have to submit to KDOT for that, so. Any questions?
Justin, I know that we have several different bridge projects potentially on the drawing board and so forth. How do you differentiate between which one you want to apply for? Do we go for the most expensive one to try to get the, the most rebate, or how do you, how do you choose the, the project?
Right. So I chose this project, number one, because it's already bid out. I knew what the costs of the project were, but most importantly is, is you want to make sure that 90% of the cost is over the $200,000, you know, so we will be utilizing all those, those funds. And so this one was already kind of in the works, and so it was, it was an easy one for me to submit.
Thank you.
But really, any, any bridge project would have, would have worked as well.
Well, it makes a lot of sense, the, the fact that you've already bid it out, and we've gotten the, the numbers on it, and, and good answer.
And do you know what your balance is on that bridge replacement project, your, your funds that you have available and what we have?
In the, in the two mil?
Yes.
No, I'm not sure, but it is, it's over 2 million.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's.
Okay.
More than enough funds available for that, yes.
All right. Any further questions, comments by the commissioners? Any public would wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve Agreement Number 106-21, Project Number 85C 208901 between KDOT and Slen County.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA Number 169-21 Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program Contract. Are there any further comments? I will bring it to the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Good morning. Have a great day. Item five.
RFA 170-21 Resolution 21-2332 Authorizing American Rescue Plan Fund Acceptance with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Chairmembers of the Commission. I feel like we have discussed this rather exhaustively, but just for the public's recap, on March 11th of this year, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law. That is sort of colloquially known as stimulus four. It is the latest round of stimulus payments that folks received, and it also included specific state and local funding that comes to us directly from the U.S. Treasury rather than via the state of Kansas, as did the coronavirus relief funds, which we received last year. So in this case, Slen County is slated to receive $10,532,367, and we waited for 60 days to receive guidance from the feds about this funding. Finally got 151 pages, which failed to answer a couple of key questions. So the resolution that I have before you this morning, I'm not sure is actually necessary, but I'm proposing it out of an abundance of caution in order to document exactly what we intend to do so that we have that record in case the feds ever choose to audit these funds. So the resolution does two things. First, it establishes a new fund in the county's fund accounting system specifically to hold these funds. It allows for deposit of these funds into the regular checking account of the county, but specifies that any interest accrued on the funds go back into the American Rescue Plan Fund so that those can be used for the purposes of the federal legislation. And secondly, it authorizes staff to go on to the federal portal and begin the process of actually applying to draw down those funds into our checking account, and more specifically designates me as the authorized representative and emergency manager, Michelle Barkley, as the point of contact for the funds. So that is the resolution, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
And in reading this, one of the things that did come to mind is that when you said that you have the controlling of that there, but you cannot move or move any money or do anything with it without the commissioner's authorization. Is that correct?
Yes. Thank you for that, Mr. Chair. Yes, I wanted to make it clear, so I actually put language in the resolution that this does not authorize me to actually spend any of the money until I come back to the five of you. I wanted to, to make that crystal clear.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments by the commission? Any comments or questions by the public? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution Number 21-2332 Authorizing American Rescue Plan Funding Acceptance.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 170-21 Resolution Authorizing American Rescue Plan Fund Acceptance. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Phil. Item six.
RFA 171-21 Contract for Disaster and Cost Recovery Consulting Services with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning.
So this is the second item on the same topic. So as I mentioned in discussing the resolution that the commission just adopted, we are receiving this funding directly from the U.S. Treasury rather than through the state. In addition, more of the standard federal guidance applies to these funds than applied to the coronavirus relief fund that we dealt with last fall. So for those reasons, I feel like we really need additional guidance. Somebody who works with federal funds on a routine basis, and particularly in the disaster recovery space, and so we issued a request for proposals this spring to try and secure someone who does this type of work. We were pleased to receive five different proposals, all from very reputable firms. Three of those firms had worked with Kansas counties on the coronavirus relief funding, and so we followed up with those Kansas counties regarding reference checks, and Michelle Barkley and I ranked all of the proposals according to the criteria in the request for proposals and came up with our top two and invited those folks for video interviews. And following that, we are recommending that we contract with iParametrics. iParametrics is a firm that, as I said, is involved in disaster recovery at the federal level and did assist Finney and Seward Counties with their coronavirus relief funding. Got very high marks from those communities. They've been extremely responsive to our requests for follow-up information, so I look forward to a good working relationship with them. Recommend the contract for your approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions by the commission?
One question. Their fees, are they eligible to come out of that, that funding?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes. We don't intend to pay them if they're not. In the coronavirus relief fund, it was specified that 5% of the funding could be used for administrative purposes, including contracts like this. The guidance that's been released on the American Rescue Plan Act so far does not specify a percentage, but there is a sort of general federal rule of reasonableness, and the federal guidance does specify that you can use the funding to perform staff tasks, including by extension through use of consultants. So we do intend to, you know, pay for this, the cost of this contract out of the funding that we receive. I will say, iParametrics also, in, in their conversations with us, gave us some examples of how they were able to cover some of their costs in other counties from other federal sources in addition to the CRF. So there may be a potential to claim some of this through FEMA public assistance as well and, and not have to dip as deeply into the ARPA funds.
Thank you.
Good question. Commissioner Wees.
He has, and as a result, we did make one change, and iParametrics was fine with that.
Okay. Any other comments?
The thing that I, that I like about these is that there is no cost to implement these programs from the county budget, and for us to get in the way of accepting the money would be a mistake, or accepting the fact that these people are going to help us on how to, how to measure this contract. So I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Any members of the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we enter into the contract with iParametrics.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 171-21 Contract for Disaster and Cost Recovery Consulting Services. Any further questions? If not, we'll call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Phil. We will move into informational items. Item one.
2022 Budget Appropriation Request by Salina Community Economic Development Organization with Mitch Robinson, Executive Director.
Good morning, Mitch.
Mitch. I'm Mitch Robinson.
Okay.
I'm Lloyd Davidson. I'm the chairman of the Economic Development.
Good morning, Lloyd.
Board, and your representative on the board, and have been for, since the beginning. I was thinking about that a little bit. We actually started meeting about nine years ago, trying to get an organization together that would. that would play nicely together to try to create better jobs and more jobs. So I'm just here to support Mitch and I'll shut up.
Okay, thank you, Lloyd. Good morning, Mitch.
Good morning. Remember that, Phil, when we had that discussion or our next board meeting. So I appreciate my chairman coming and being with us today and we're going to work through this pretty quickly. I know you all have got a long agenda, but it's my pleasure to be here. It's it's hard to believe that the organization has been around as long as Lloyd mentioned. It was December of 16 when I moved here from from southeast Missouri to start the organization up. And we've we've had, it's been interesting, several years to say the least with COVID having an impact and but let's let's get started with this slide. Let's go on over to the to the first slide. Those of you all, several of you all were there for the ribbon cutting and open house, really the announcement of One Vision Aviation coming out to the airport. It was an exciting day. Senator Moran was able to come in and make some remarks and welcome Jim Spondere to Salina. At that point, we had, you can go ahead, next slide, we had some targeted numbers of where we were going to be going. Little did we know at that time, the state, the world was going to be upended with the COVID virus having a major impact on all of us. The building, you all all know, Big Bertha, the biggest hangar at the airport, it's 128,000 square feet. If you go by there today, you see, I think this morning I counted, I don't know, a dozen aircraft that's under work. During this time, Jim had had high hopes for their operation moving quickly and they were up to about 100 people when the virus came in. You can go to the next slide, please. And we ended up getting to a point where he was right at 50. And then we started unfortunately going down toward 30. And at that point, Jim was able to really turn his business on a dime, pretty much, to get into more of a hands-on with clients, companies that needed their success story, really. And Jim Spondere has been a great person to have into the community. He's now, we're back up to the 250 employee target number that he felt like he would be able to get to. Little did we know it was going to take a little bit longer, but his successes have been very strong. He has brought a large number of people into the community, aviation experts, mechanics, as are known A&amp;Ps, airplane and power plant mechanics. And a lot of those folks have have moved here and set put down roots as they move ahead. And where he sees us going is that 450 number is still is still his target and he believes that that'll be that'll be occurring. So go ahead, next slide, please. One more. So this is his comment, a recent story. The doors are open for hiring right now and he is very serious about that. They've they've been literally having people bunking in people's couches and sleeping over to find places for some of these new mechanics to to live at here in the community. Go ahead, next slide, please. And then August came along, August 2020. As you all know, most of you all were there that day. The governor was was here making the announcement with the Swans management team. And we had, I think it was about 95, close to 100 degrees that day. So it was not the greatest day to be outside, but it was it was successful. The picture you see on the right-hand side is the drawing layout of the of the new plant. And I encourage if anybody has not been out to see the construction, I would highly recommend it because the building structure is going to be done fairly quickly. The pre-tilt, the concrete tilt-up panels are being shipped here from from Kansas City and being erected on the site. And it's almost complete and we'll soon be seeing the metal roofing panels and the infrastructure related to that roof go into place. So go ahead, next slide. This is, for those of you all recognize that that dark rectangular shape is the building, the new 400,000 square foot. This is two new production lines will be going inside that rectangular building. And and there's tremendous amount of site work that is still going on, drainage work, street improvements. Go ahead, next slide, please. And what we're looking at is, as you all know, a $600 million investment. The building's 400,000. We were very fortunate with Senator Moran's assistance, able to get roughly 3.8 million in a Federal Economic Development Administration grant that'll go toward street improvements and ditch improvements along Centennial, Centennial Ditch. So as you all know, there are flooding issues, the way the water comes off the airport. That's now going to be all diverted. There's a large retention basin that's constructed on the south end of where the building, the new building is going. So that'll be all retained and then will be slowly fed out to Centennial Ditch and into the drainage that way. Also, we were able to get through Kansas Department of Transportation, the $2.1 million Highway Street Assistance Program. And that again is going to help with, there'll be some additional turning lanes. There'll be what they call stacking lanes where the trucks will be able to come off of Centennial. And those trucks will be able to go into the new, the new area where the the storage and the the Frasier Warehouse Complex will be built there south of the former hospital. You see your job numbers, retention of the 1,200 that we currently have at at Swans, which is a tremendous number. And then we get into the roughly 225 jobs over the second and third year. And these are positions that are above average, above our county average of over 17 an hour or so. We're excited about that. The quality of these positions will be such that the the positions will be some of the best paying jobs there at the plant. Currently, their entry level wage is around 13, 25, 13, 50, depending on the shift. And this will be much higher than that, so. So that same week, we can go on the next slide. Same week, I've never been doing this for 30, there's a there's a picture of the the construction that's going on, that's coming off of the airport terminal. So if you get out there, you know, there's been a lot more done since then. But go ahead, next slide. And this is, this again, this is talking about the the panel construction, but very unique, quick, 509 panels, that's the story there, so it'll be part of a construction. Go ahead, next, please. So then, I've been doing this over 30 years, I've never had two announcements in the same week. So it was quite unusual that Great Plains decided they were ready to move forward. This has been another exciting project for the community with the acquisition of the former Phillips Building, Signify Building. This end of July, Great Plains will be taking over the building. And they have been working with their team from Japan to already modify and get that building up to speed for the new construction. And we're talking about the loaders that are there in the the picture there. They have construction industry list of equipment that's being made in Japan currently. This is all going to be brought to the United States. They're going to compete against others in that same industry segment. And they feel very comfortable that Kubota will be able to go up against most of your your Bobcats and other equipment on the track loader industry. So we'll start seeing more of those here in the United States in the next several years. Next, please. And then here's your numbers, your investment numbers on this project. It was $53 billion. As we said, it's 750,000 square feet, the July 1 acquisition of the building. And then they're looking in December of '24 to have it up and going. But first, we're basically looking at 130 new jobs during the first three years, over $26, $27. You'll see the averages there on our chart. And then year four, there's going to be more. There'll be additionally additional positions brought in from Japan and outside the country. So we're very fortunate that Great Plains has a terrific relationship with with Kubota, their owner, and they're able to bring these new jobs in. Okay, let's move ahead. I'm trying to get this done. Here's just some additional pictures from that day, which was a fun day. We had state state officials over from Topeka. Next. Okay, so we've we've had traditionally, our goals were attraction of new industry to the community and then entrepreneurship. So we were very fortunate to have several different local entrepreneurs come in, our own commissioner here, came and spoke and did an excellent job and appreciated him taking his time out to come and talk about, you know, how do you start a business? What what's involved with entrepreneurship? So that continues to be one of our priorities. Unfortunately, because of the shutdown due to COVID, you know, we, like everybody else, had to go to to working remotely. And we were able to continue to promote the programs via email, via Zoom, via all other mechanisms that were out there. So this was just one of the sessions we had at the temple, which is where we've been having our our meetings there. So next. It talks about the actual meetings we had. We do meet the first, I've been trying to meet the first Wednesday, and that'll be coming back in July 7, I believe, is the first date that we'll be back again. Okay, go ahead, next. This is some of our sponsors that's been involved in in our our startup program, Evergy, SS&amp;C, ISG, First Bank, those were our our main sponsors. And then we've been able to work very closely with with SCORE, Small Business Development Center, the temple, obviously Dane G. Hansen Foundation's been in their their economic development group out of Norton has been very, very helpful, very, very strong in terms of assistance. Next, please. When you start up an organization, you've got to have a plan. And this was pictures from our work with AD Advantage. Some of you all attended that that session where we met with Janet AD, who is known nationally as one of the top consultants in the country, that put together our plan. We're in the process of modifying that right now. Next, please. And we've had targeted industries, obviously aviation is one of those that continues to be a strong point for us, success we've had with with One Vision. Metal fabrication continues to be a strong source, food production. So we've gotten a pretty strong targeted industry segments that we know what is best for, what appears to be best for our community, and that's what we continue to go after. And we were very fortunate just to receive a grant from Evergy, our energy supplier, to come back and do an update with AD and move forward with that. And we'll have that at our next board meeting next month, we'll be approving that. Next. Okay, so we know what we've been working on, we've had some success. Where do we need to be going next? And I think if any of us look around and and think about what what is our priorities, this is what the board has met with, we've talked about, what we've looked at, housing, going back to workforce, where are we, where are we getting our workers from? How are they, how are they living here? How do we get them to move here? Housing is is obviously one of the top issues. There are a couple of companies that are looking at putting in new facilities here, which we're very excited about, but it's it's a long process. This is going to be a multi-year effort to get the amount of houses constructed, the amount of units, either through duplexes, quadplexes, or higher density units. That's going to be coming. And I think we've got a pretty good angle working on that. It's going to be a big change for the for the city and the county in the future. So but that's something that teamwork, I think we can bring all that together. But so housing is a critical, critical item, workforce development, childcare is another area that that we're on the sidelines, working with the partners that that have a role to play in that and we're assisting them. Certified sites, we're going to be upgrading our website again. And then we're continuing to work with our entrepreneurial efforts, including this fall, we're going to be having a challenge, entrepreneurial challenge, to have people come forward with ideas on projects and see if we could possibly find funding for those for those companies. Okay, let's go to the next one. Okay, we have, this is our, been our budget page for going back to 2016. We have been very conservative on our spending. We've gone out and reached to the targeted marketing organizations that we work with to get advertising done. The county has been solid in their commitment to us. We have not asked, this this would be our third year, our third segment, and we've, our second year, we did not come back for an increase. We kept at the $20,000 range. This year, due to spending, spend down of our reserves, we felt like we have to come back to the county, the city, and the airport authority and ask for increases to cover the rising expenses we're seeing and also to expand into the programs that we want to reach out and use to attract new companies into the community. So we are, as the letter you have, we did ask for a $50,000 or total amount coming up from the 20,000 that we've had the last six years. So I believe that's it. I will be more than happy to stand and answer any questions. I don't know how long it took me to run through here, but I'd be, like I said, more than happy to answer questions. We feel like we've got a good, a good plan for the next three years, but it's always something that being able to pivot, change, make make a change to different activities, which housing is definitely one of those. We'll continue to work with our economic development standard attraction, but again, we have to work on, you know, where are those workers coming from? And you talk to any manufacturer in the community, any business person in the community, as you all, we've talked about hiring of your all's staff as well. It's a, it's a major, major situation we have here. And it's not just here, it's everywhere in the country, so.
Okay, thank you, Mitch. Any other comments or questions by the commissioners? Thank you.
Anytime you have questions, please give me a call.
We know where you're at.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number two.
2022 Budget Appropriation Request by Saline County
Twenty twenty-two budget appropriation request by Celine County Fair Association with Carl Garten, board member.
Good morning, Carl.
Morning. I'm Carl Garten, representing the Celine County Fair Association. Our request is for twenty thousand dollars to continue having the fair with additional ten thousand requests in there to help cover the youth events, such as the four H activities and those things at the fair. We realized after last year's fair that we did during the COVID event, the actual cost of doing some of the, just the youth portion of that fair was more than what we had realized in the past. So that's the reason for those additional funds. I believe all of you have the information as far as the budget. I was informed that that had been provided to you. So if you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
I don't have any at this time because it's like, it's a, it's a, it's a it's ongoing and it's been ongoing for a long time. There's certain things. And now that we've taken some of the items, like the stadium, out of the equation and it's going to be a really hard situation coming down the road. And here where the county is providing some updates to the facilities over there to help maybe down the road that we can make it better for everybody that's coming to the fair. Yeah, so.
But we will lose, like you said, our additional funding. We'll, you know, Demo Derby will not be able to happen there, a few other events.
Yes.
Rodeo. This year doesn't look like we're going to have a carnival due to the visas for South African employees that he uses to rent his carnival. So interesting of all the things that this COVID and everything else has caused for problems, so.
Carl, has the, the fair board reached an agreement with the city as far as the short-term leasing of the fairgrounds, of the rodeo grounds?
Right, we have. We will have it through this year's fair. And I believe we have until September fifteenth to clear that material off of there that you guys have grabbed over us. I was just sitting back there thinking, Roger, we probably need to decide whether there's any of those bleachers that you need for your exercise arena or whatever you're going to call that additional structure to the south of Ag Hall that you may want to keep or, you know, so that we don't dispose of those someplace else before, you know, you have to purchase something new. So we may want to think about that a little bit before we get too far down the line.
Yep, okay. And I think that that's already been determined by our new expo director. But I, I would.
But he called me this morning. We visited for about a half hour on other items.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Thank you, and we'll look into this and hopefully we'll be able to help out.
All right, thank you.
Have a great day. Item three.
Twenty twenty-two budget appropriation request by OCCK with Sheila Nelson Stout, president and CEO.
Good morning, Sheila.
Good morning.
And your co-part.
Yes. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning. Good morning, young man.
Okay, well, good morning again, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this morning to give an update about what OCCK has been doing for the last year. I have with me Pat Willarias, as you probably all know, and Susan Sprague. Pat is Chief Financial Officer for OCCK. And Susan is Vice President of Expansion Services for OCCK. So we're going to talk to you a little bit about what we've been doing for the last year and what services have been happening in your community. So the vision of OCCK has always been to provide an array of services for anybody with a short or long-term disability so that they can stay independent in their community. We continually look for ways and we continually get requests from people to do different things. So as we hear needs arise from people, we try to respond to those needs and look at services that people ask for. In the last three years, we've expanded a lot of services. We've expanded services for people with Alzheimer's and dementia. We've expanded transportation services, services to kids with autism, services for people with brain injury, both traumatic brain injury and acquired like a stroke or heart attack where you lose oxygen for a period of time, those kinds of things. We've expanded employment services to help people get jobs. We've expanded attendant care services because if you need help showering or those kinds of things, it's hard to find. We've expanded transition services for any type of transition. People going home from hospitals, nursing homes, kids leaving high school to come into the adult world. So we do a lot of work around transition services. Last year, we served three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five people, gave two hundred and fifty-eight thousand rides in Celine County, and four hundred and ninety-three people used the Can Cycle Program in Celine County. We've increased the number of people we've served in Celine County from thirteen forty to sixteen thirty-six in the last three years. We're up to three hundred and thirteen staff, two hundred and two in Celine County. And we processed payroll for another four hundred and twenty-three attendance. So we returned fourteen million to the county of the funds that we have. So that's a great thing. A couple of things that I wanted to mention that are happening on a statewide basis that are great things for our area. The first is we have been advocating for rate increases for people with developmental disabilities on that waiver. So as you know, there's four thousand people in Kansas waiting for services on that waiver. And everyone is having a hard time hiring. So we've, we've been advocating for the last several years. This year, we got an increase again from the state, a five percent increase for all providers in Celine County. So that's a wonderful thing. Most everybody OCCK already has passed theirs on in a rate increase for direct service staff. The second thing that's a really good thing for our community, I believe, is the legislature passed a bill to look at crisis services for people who are struggling to stay in their homes and in, and in their communities. So there is an allocation of funds and the state will guide us and work with us through putting together crisis teams that would work across the state with people with disabilities, both mental health and developmental disabilities. So we'll be partnering with Mental Health Center for sure and mental health providers across the state. But I, I think, I think it's exciting. We have, you know, we're looking at rural model and we're looking at urban models. Lots of times, you know, there used to be a lot of psychiatric support through hospitals. That has gone by the wayside pretty much. So now if I'm struggling, I go to Larned or I go to Parsons or I go to Topeka State. But I have no support before and I have no support when I get home. So those crisis services would allow teams of people, professional teams of people to go in and help after someone gets home or before they leave. So it would look like we would work with local sheriffs, police departments, mental health professionals, and bring professionals that we would employ around that person to see if we could keep the person from having to go to another place or help them transition when they get home. So I think that's a wonderful thing. We've asked for that for many, many years, and I think it's great that it's coming. And then the other really good thing that the legislature did this year was they increased the amount of money that people could keep if they have Medicaid. So five years ago, you could only have seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars a month if you had Medicaid that you could keep and use for rent, utilities, food, all of those kinds of things. As you can imagine, you can't live on seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. And so people lived in places that weren't very healthy. People didn't eat well. People couldn't get transportation. People couldn't buy clothes. Excuse me, lots of different things. So two years ago, that increased, excuse me, two years ago, that increased to eleven hundred dollars. And this year, it increased to two thousand three hundred dollars. So that will really assist people in living in decent places, buying nutritional food, all of paying for services that they need. So those are great things. As you all know, I talked last year about, last year being our fiftieth anniversary at OCCK. And we certainly picked an interesting year to try to celebrate an anniversary. So we had money set aside for open houses and all of those typical things that you do at an anniversary. And we couldn't, we couldn't do any of those things last year. So what the ideas that staff came up with is to start a scholarship fund for people with disabilities to further their education. So we put twenty thousand dollars into a scholarship fund. We've since then had donations, which is wonderful. And just last week, we gave away, or we designated scholarships for five people to begin our scholarship process. So we had people ask to go to trade schools, to community colleges, to universities. And so we're really excited for that to get started and can't wait to see how people use that to further their education. So I'm asking for a three percent increase this year. We haven't had an increase for, I think, five years from Celine County. We, you know, we certainly try to do everything that we can possibly do with every penny we get to serve more people. And so we'll continue to do that. Now I'll turn it over to Susan and Pat for some comments. And then I'll be glad to answer questions or I can answer them now if you have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sheila.
Hi, thank you for your time today. Good morning, I'm Susan Sprague. Sheila mentioned some different things that we've done to expand services in response to what people are requesting. And one of the things she mentioned was autism services. So in 2020, OCCK was approved, went through the approval process with the state to deliver autism supports for families. Then we went on, we got credentialed with the managed care organizations, went on to get credentialed with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And, and as families come to us with different types of insurance, we'll credential so we can provide support to them as well. The autism supports are birth to age twenty-one. And it's a, they're complementary services to school supports for autism. So these are community-based. So it's working with moms and dads and young adults evenings, weekends, again, to complement what would be provided in support within the school system. So in addition to the autism services, we took a look at, we have continued our partnership with the University of Kansas Alzheimer's Disease Center. They, they have requested and we are serving on their coalition. It is a, a group of folks. They asked us to be kind of a boots-on-the-ground voice, if you will, of rural, north-central rural Kansas and what families were experiencing. And also to ensure that if there were families, if there were caregivers, if there were families that wanted to participate in studies to help the University Disease Center learn more about struggles and whatnot that families might be having with Alzheimer's, dementia, that they were included, they had the opportunity to be included in those studies, which is important because there is a barrier of travel to go to Kansas City, to go to Wichita, that type of thing. So working to make sure that there isn't a barrier for that wish to participate. In addition to that work, that continued work with the KU Alzheimer's Disease Center, we took a look at caregivers would, would say, you know, sometimes it's just hard. Even without a pandemic, it's hard to get out and about, to get someone to the doctor's office, for example. So we looked into tele-med, tele-health, what type of technology could possibly assist and would work in Celine County and small towns wherever there may not be or the family doesn't afford internet-type support. So it would work regardless of the family or the person having that support. It would just be contained within the unit itself. And so that's something that we began in 2020 as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners.
Thank you.
It's, it's good to see you all again. It's, it's a, it's a different kind of feeling. As both Sheila and Susan pointed out, as you can tell, OCCK is a very diversified organization. We serve anybody with any type of disability. One of those services, of course, is general public transportation, which is something that we look at is a very critical function to the communities we serve. It allows people to be independent, allows people to stay within the communities. And you look at survey after survey and transportation is always one of the top on the list. How better is to keep someone independent without having affordable, accessible public transportation? We keep expanding our services. Two thousand twenty, because of the pandemic, the shutdown period, we had to adjust some of our services, but now we're back, we're back, we're back at a hundred percent. We have some really interesting plans that we're, we're working with KDOT on to even improve our services, to expand our services. OCCK was the first in the state, and I think there's only three now that have a mobility manager. And what that mobility manager does, it coordinates services with the other providers. So the whole general public, public transportation realm can be more efficient and more effective. Instead of buses crossing, this way we can kind of work, work with other, with other providers. As you can tell, if you drive down Santa Fe, we're adding a sixteen thousand square foot addition to our building thanks to a grant from, from, from Kansas Department of Transportation and some, some funding support from, from the city of Salina. It's kind of, since I was involved with it from day one, in two thousand and five, when we moved from our garage out on Schilling Road to transportation, the building was so big, you could hear, we could hear people echo. Of course, at that time, we weren't doing the fixed route service. We weren't doing a lot of the non-emergency medical transportation. But now, which is bulging at the seams and, and, and this sixteen thousand square foot addition is certainly going to, is certainly going to help us. I think one thing that public transportation is giving back to the community, not only affordable transportation, but we offered free rides for people to get vaccinated, which was very successful. We gave free rides to people to go vote this year, which, which is very successful. And we keep looking again, other things that make the service better, that make it more user-friendly and, and, and expand, expand our services with them. On the other side, as Sheila pointed out, we have, we can continue to grow. Three hundred-plus employees. And we were fortunate in two thousand and twenty, with everything going on, we did not have to furlough any employees. We did not have to lay off any employees. We served equal the numbers that we, we served in, in, in previous years. We did give employees an opportunity, actually a cash bonus if they wanted to get vaccinated. And we had a lot of employees, I think that got vaccinated anyway, but we had a lot of employees that took advantage of that. So it's, it was an interesting year. We did have some cuts in, in our funding due to, again, the lockdown where we couldn't go see people. But all in all, it was, it was a very good year. And, and a copy of our 2021 budget is included within the packet. You can take a look at that if you have any questions. So that's pretty much my presentation unless you have any questions. Okay, thank you, and thank you for your past support.
Thank you, thank you. We'll take it in consideration. Thank you, thank you for your time. Item number four.
Twenty twenty-two budget appropriation request by North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging Incorporated with Julie Govert-Walter, Director.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
It's nice to be here in person again. Kelsey Fawnenstill, who's the Director of our Long-Term Care Services and Supports, is distributing our 2020 fact sheet. And we wanted you to have a copy of that. Also, she's distributing a brochure of our agency. I think there was information in your packet about our 2020, our 2022 requests. So I just want to refer you to those items. So I just want to refer you to those items. The North Central Flint Hills is a private, not-for-profit group that serves 18, 18 counties in the heartland of Kansas. And of course, we're delighted to have one of three regional offices right here in Salina. You can see that from the fact sheet, you can see the number of people who are over age 60 that reside here in Saline County as compared to the total population, right about 20% of Saline County's over age 60. You have about 730 people who are in the minority classification. And a lot of times, folks who are in that classification have some more significant health issues. And that's why, and under the Older Americans Act, which is a major source of our funding, we are to target those groups. And you'll also see that about, well, close to 6% of your 60-plus population here in Saline County have incomes below the poverty level. And that is another key population that we focus on in our work with our funding. And then I think that's very significant that we have right around 27% of older people in Saline County who are living alone. And that's an important thing to remember about the folks that we are serving with money and in home services and meals. The next part of our fact sheet focuses on the counting, the county funding that we've requested from Saline County in the past. And in fiscal year 2022, you can see that we're requesting $22,000, $22,171 in administrative money and $12,125 for support for the Senior Care Act. I will tell you that our Board of Directors, it's, we just don't make these numbers up. There's a formula, and we ask, and it includes the, it includes a total population of the county, the valuation of the county, the number of people age 60, and that's how we come up with our funding request. So it's not something that, that one of us makes up one morning and comes to you and says, oh, hey, we want this amount of money. I want to also mention that the fact sheet on the next page, next page, you'll see the value of the services based on our calculations that we've, have for all the services provided in 2020 to individuals living in Saline County. Right now, that total amount of services is $623,976. And that, when you take a conservative multiple, economic multiplier, that means that we've invested somewhere around $3.1 million of our, of services money here in Saline County. And it also points out on this fact sheet that there are 14 full-time equivalencies that are here in Saline County. And I just want to say that that's, that's a pretty big number in terms of our, our staffing. We don't have, we don't have that many people in our employee office, and we have a few more in Manhattan, so just to, just to give you a picture. Do you have any questions about our fact sheet or the services that our area agency on aging provides here in Saline County? I, I also want to let you know that in the information that I provided, we are also making a special request. The special request is to help us defray some of our cost for COVID-19 expenditures and also to, I guess I'll say, get on a even playing field in terms of some past dollars that were not provided to our agency. And this, this is because of a transition. I think we, I was here, I think, last year, the year before, asking for those dollars that we had requested from previous, the previous administration with Saline County that managed the funds at that time. And there was a transition challenge. We are, since we did expend and invest in Saline County in terms of during COVID-19, we're asking for a special request and consideration from COVID-19 monies that may be available in your county. That request is for $40,000. And again, to help us defray expenses that were incurred between March of 2020 and current. But we're also looking at this as a way to, I guess I'll say, catch up. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I know Kelsey Fawnenstill would be very happy to also answer any questions about long-term care services.
Okay. I don't, I'm good. Any other questions, comments?
Before I leave the podium, I do want to recognize Mr. Archie Riggs, who's a member of our Board of Directors.
Good morning, Archie. Yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Very much. Thank you. We'll move on to item number five.
2022 Budget Appropriation Request by Salina Media Connection with Deborah Cox Management Team.
Don't see her.
I, I don't see Ms. Cox. I will say that I think there was information included in your packet.
Yes.
That they're essentially requesting to stay status quo because they weren't quite sure what was happening in the transition with the city of Salina. I did receive on Friday, after your packets went out, a letter from the city of Salina. And so I'm sure we'll have further conversations about that as the budget progresses.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll move on to item six.
Commissioners' comments.
I would like to just tell the, my fellow commissioners that I did attend the first meeting of the Jail Reduction Task Force, the reorganized task force, I should say. And as a reminder, we started this five years ago, and in an attempt to decrease our population as we were spending a million dollars a year sending housing inmates in other counties. And that committee ended up becoming a jail committee, which is fine, passed. But it, I think it was time for us to, to kind of reorganize and rethink this. And I think if we head down the same path that we have this last six or eight years, we'll fill up this jail, too. And so we're looking at ways to move people through the system a little quicker, possibly find alternative punishments for low-level, nonviolent criminals. And I thought it was a very productive meeting. I'm excited about it. I think that you'll, you'll see some really innovative ideas come out of this. I want to say that, give a special shout out to the county attorney and Jeff Ebel and his assistant, Alex Driscoll. They were there, and they need to be part of this. And they came, they, they just came in the first day with an attitude of not why things wouldn't work, but how, how things can work. And, and so the brainstorming session was very positive. Very, very excited to have Jack Shahan on, on board here. We've never had a defense attorney. He brings just incredible knowledge of, of the system and, and what's bogging things down, taking people so long to get through the, through the process. And he was fantastic, too. So just want to say, I'll keep you abreast of this. We're just gonna meet monthly for a while, and we'll just, we'll see what comes out of this. But very, very excited, and I think we, we finally have the right people at the table.
Okay. Thank you. Good information.
I'll quickly comment that I, Friday, attended the Advisory Board for the Senior Service Center. There was a lot of good discussion there. Many members were missing. I don't believe there was a quorum, so there wasn't any action being taken, but, but there was discussion on the service, the, the cost of the meals, some exciting news about grants that are being proposed. And I see Rosie is on our agenda to speak here, so if you have any questions about anything that's going on there. But, but there was some positive input, and I think we'll see some continued improvements and better days ahead.
Okay. I will comment that I was at the last Tuesday night, we had the Fair Board meeting, and pretty interesting, where they do have the control of the stadium through this year, so there will be some events this year for the rodeo, the demolition derby, I'm pretty sure. And I think they're gonna have some, even bands. I think they're gonna have a few nights with some live entertainment. So this year, knowing that this will be the last year of the stadium availability to the Fair Board, that they was kind of trying to make it kind of a, let's go out in a big style, so. And coming down, like they just said, that there will be no, I think the fair, the actual carnival will not be there. But there's a lot of other things happening and, and looking forward to it. So that's about it. Any other comments? Any announcements?
I have an announcement, Chairman. 2021 elections this year are for city-school elections. So we have all incorporated cities have positions that are open. We also have all the school districts that have positions open. The Central Kansas Extension District has board members. And then we also have Dayton Drainage District also has board members up. The filing deadline is next Tuesday. It's June 1st at noon, so I just want to let that, people know that.
You said school board, but also city commission, correct?
Yeah, all incorporated cities.
All the corporate, okay.
Yeah, so Osaria, Jepson, Brookville, New Cambrian, Smolyn also have positions available.
Okay. Any other announcements? Okay, we'll move into a study session. Item number one, Senior Services Advisory Council appointment. Rosie Walter.
I am here seeking approval or recommendation for our vacant advisory council position. We have a member that is no longer able to serve right now. So our advisory council did meet, and they went through the expression of interest that we have. We have four that we did contact and see if they were still willing to serve. You can see those individuals. Our recommendation with the council is to appoint Rita Dyster to fill that position upon your approval.
I guess my comment would be, this is, this is a good and a bad, if you will, and that is that we've got four people that are willing to serve, capable of serving, and we, we only have one position to fill.
It's a good problem.
So it's, it's a tough, tough situation to tell these good people that are, that are volunteering for these positions that, sorry, we don't need you, when, when, when in essence, we really do need them, and we want them to keep going. And I appreciate the fact that your board comes up with, with a nomination and a recommendation, but it, it bothers me to have to turn people away that are volunteering to do these things. So, but that's the, the nature of the business. The boards can only be so big and, and still be functional. So thank you for giving us a recommendation.
I can't think of anybody better for this position.
I.
I mean, again, again, I, I echo Bob's comment, and I'm not saying that the other three are not, but Rita would just be perfect for this, so.
Yes.
I assume this is a study session item?
Yes.
Then we'll come back.
Yes. Yeah, so I think the intent is if the commission is good with that recommendation, then there would be a resolution next Tuesday.
Well, I'll call echo, Mr. Shadwick. I know Rita has worked hard with, with the senior center. She's involved in a lot of the projects that could go on there, so I believe she'd be a good addition to that board, but I sure don't want to hold anyone back from keeping their names on that list because those openings do come up right up.
And I would follow the stance where we're at with Rita. Yes.
Proceed with the resolution.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Looks like we're going to go into executive. Can I get a recess for about three minutes?
I, I would love that, Mr. Chair, because I could use a recess as well. But following the recess, staff would request that we move into an executive session under the employer-employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for 20 minutes. And attendees, in addition to the commission, will be myself and HR Director Marilyn Lemmer.
Okay.
So I, I would make that motion and reconvene in here at 11 o'clock. That gives us about 14 minutes here. Or, is that good enough? Yeah, that would give you your 20, yeah. Wait a minute, that's too many minutes.
10:50.
Too many minutes, I'm sorry. 11:50.
Yep.
10:50. 10:50. We'll get it right in a minute.
Okay, yeah. Sounds good.
I don't expect anybody to second all of that now.
I'll second, yeah, you can second that.
All in favor?
Yeah. You're guilty, too.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Well, go into the executive session in three minutes.
Talk about clobbering it up.
And are there any other comments or questions, any other information during the meeting? Thank you.